I would like to reconvene the meeting and call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of October 16, 2018. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Moats?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. City Attorney, Mr. Trujillo, could you please give the closed session report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is no reportable action for both closed session agenda items.
Thank you. Our first item this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Moats will be making the presentation.
And this proclamation will be for Red Ribbon Week. Whereas Red Ribbon Week is the longest-running nationwide campaign for drug abuse prevention and education promoting healthy, drug-free lifestyles, and has been promoted by the Friday Night Live program, Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley, and Family Service Agency, and whereas Friday Night Live was developed in 1984 as a statewide model program to reduce alcohol use and other problems among young people, by building partnerships for positive and healthy youth development that engages youth as active leaders and resources in their communities, and whereas the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse has hosted Santa Barbara County Friday Night Live Youth Program since 1986 to provide local students' leadership opportunities to prevent the use and abuse of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, and whereas Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley has supported youth development and the Red Ribbon Week campaign, standing by their mission statement to partner with all members of the community to achieve resiliency against substance abuse while promoting a healthy lifestyle for the city's youth, and whereas schools, government agencies, law enforcement, local businesses, religious institutions, service organizations, school-based counselors, families, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to a healthy, drug-free lifestyles through school and community campaigns. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of Santa, City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes October 23rd to 28th, 2018, as Red Ribbon Week, and the City of Santa Maria, and encourages all residents and businesses to support and participate in alcohol and other drug prevention activities to celebrate this year's theme, "Life is Your Journey: Travel Drug-Free." And this will be accepted by Stephen Thompson, Melissa Broughton, and Frankie Maldonado.
you on behalf of the North County Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Team. This proclamation is a collaboration with Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley and Family Service Agencies. It is important that we collaborate as agencies and provide the best services we can to our youth. Red Ribbon Week brings awareness and education to our students on the dangers of alcohol and drug use. With the current legalization of marijuana and opioid epidemic, it is imperative that we inform our students of the dangers of it. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all you do in the community. The next item on our agenda will be the public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given. However, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request-to-speak form. And we have five requests to speak.
Five requests to speak? Okay.
I'm sorry, four.
Four. I think you have five now. So you set this timer for three minutes, and first is Mark Rattamaker, followed by Sarah McDonald.
My fellow San Marians, Mayor, thank you for giving me three minutes of your time. Let's jump right in. Homeschoolers are private educational endeavors. They exist by voluntarily using their own resources to teach their own children. Private schools are similar. They attract parents who believe in what they are doing. Parents voluntarily give their own money to the private school. Santa Maria public schools are not a voluntarily, are not a voluntary educational endeavor. Santa Maria forces the citizen of Santa Maria and others via property tax, et cetera, to give the city some of its money. The city steals from the citizen under the mask of the majority. The city creates a public school which competes against its own citizens, the homeschoolers and the private schools, who were also forced to pay for the public school. Santa Maria, lazy, good-for-nothing people, let this take place. Wake up! Dismantle public education before it dismantles you. Not only will the city take all of your money, your daughter will come home crying, saying that she had to shower with the boys, and your son will come home saying that he is a girl, and he will demand that you buy him dresses, and if you don't, he'll have the authorities arrest you. This is how bad it's getting. Do you think I'm kidding? Your children spend more time learning at a public school that you sent them to than they do from you. Generally speaking, they, your children, will actually be the children of the God, the truth, the Jesus-hating state. Please think about these words. And thank you for, once again, three minutes. Good night.
Thank you. Sarah McDonald, followed by Cheryl Assan, followed by Felipe Mendoza.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers.
Good evening.
Tonight I represent the League of Women Voters as part of their Observer Corps. So I just, I'm told that I'm supposed to do this. This is my first time being your observer.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Cheryl Assan, followed by Felipe Mendoza, followed by Ernest Armenta.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. Oh, wait, that's I. I'm back again. Last time I was here, we were discussing about the meeting for H2As that we're supposed to be having, and we're not having it until December. Then I started thinking after the meeting, by the time we have that meeting, and everything gets discussed and everything with the holidays, we're going to be right back where we were when we started this in January of this year. So it'd be a whole year, and we haven't done, and nothing's been done. We've had meeting, we've had three meetings where we were supposed to have five. So, you know, I don't know what's going on. I know there's conflicts and stuff going on, but we're going to be right back where the ordinance was started, and you guys canceled it because it wasn't fair to the farmers, because they didn't have enough time. Well, we've had a year, and we're still in the same spot. They're going to start giving out contracts in January, February, and then when we come back after our meeting in December, and after you guys discussed in holidays, their contracts will probably be started. So then they'll have to ask for another year. That's not fair to the city, to the citizens of Santa Maria that are upset about this. You know, I understand it takes a lot of time, and there's other, there's more pressing things going on in the world and in Santa Maria, but this is important to our neighborhoods. We want neighborhoods. We want families here. We want families to move in, not move out, where some are. Some of our families are moving out because Santa Maria is not a family town anymore. We give priorities to other people than the people that are here, that have grown up here, that have lived here and raised families here. It is time to start thinking about our families. And I know we need the farmers. Believe me, I know that, but you got, you also need the families here, because without the families, Santa Maria does not grow. The kids leave. Why should they stay? Nothing is for them. Everything else is, you know, for the agriculture or whoever. You've got to think of families. If I had a 202 again, I wouldn't be here. To be truthful, I would not raise my children here again. If it was now, I would not. I just want you guys to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Felipe Mendoza, followed by Ernest Armenta.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
My name is Felipe. I live in Villa Caro, 1951, and today I got a kind of, not a good news, but anyway, it's a hope. One of the owners, which is really supposed to be, the name is, Brenda Mendoza, okay? She came to us and tell us, she, they want to put the house for sale after December 15, or probably they rent the house, but they rent the house that doesn't be anymore. H, what is it? One second, okay? It's H.
Two A.
Two A, right? Okay. Supposed to, they want to take that place out of the neighbors, and that's what we hope, you know, because it's, like, we've been coming here probably to bargain you sometimes on the hope, you know, to you guys listen to us. I want to say thank you to the last person who went over there and put attention, with the last meeting, came over here, we talked about the problem, and somebody went over there and put kind of little order in the place. That's why they came to us and we explained, you know, those little problems we have in there. And finally, that's what I got right now, and the other thing is, I hope, you know, if they remove this place from there, the rest of the neighbors, they don't have to have any more problem with this type of things here, you know. I don't, I'm not against to nobody, but I want to try to save my neighborhood, because again, in that street and not the whole place, I don't see any signs for a business in there. And these guys, they charge the people for living in there. Nothing is free. If they come to tell you they don't charge, somebody has to put money in there, okay? So I don't mind, you know, if it does families, you know, single families come over there, they are welcome, and everybody, but the thing is, you know, people, single people are not the same. I have a family, and I have to take care of my family and pay my neighbors too. So I want to say thank you very much, and hopefully, you know, you guys can keep going with this to help and that, because definitely, I was last, my hope, after so long, you know, working there in the houses, and then they came with this, all this problem there. So hopefully, we finish with this, and I'm not having no problem with nobody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Ernest Armenta.
Ernest Armenta, I'd like to introduce to you the, see the lady who is there with the black jacket and the white shirt? Her name is Alice, and she's our leader. Tell her, hey, my name's Victoria Vega.
My name is Victoria.
Well, good evening, Victoria.
And what school do you go to?
Saint Mary's.
Yeah, we're Catholics. Catholic power here. So, well, today Nino has to be on his best behavior, Mrs. Patino. See, inside here, when, when the little one's not around, then I can conduct myself in a different way, but today Nino's on his best behavior, and so I want to introduce you guys all to the other part of me, Victoria Vega. She goes to Saint Mary's School, and tell her what you think about Santa Maria.
I like it.
We'll see you guys in a, hey, she wants out.
Thank you, Mr. Armenta. Thank you, Victoria. Okay, moving on. This concludes the public comment. Before we move on, Mr. Sewell, any comments?
Just a brief comment. So thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We did hear Mr. Mendoza's comment at the last meeting regarding Villa Caro. We did send a group of staff members out there to contact the adjacent property owner, and so we appreciate hearing that met his intent, and we continue to follow up on that issue.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion, and these items are discussed only on request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to put, pull item 3F.
Okay.
Mayor, I don't have an item to pull, but I do have a comment on the, on the minutes.
Okay.
The comment I have is what Mr. Armenta mentioned last meeting, and the overview that we had of the roadways, and I think the most astonishing thing to me, and he referred to it as an asset, and I really don't think I ever did, that it's a billion dollars worth of roadway that we have in our community, and, and I just, I, I thought about that for two weeks. I even mentioned it to another councilperson, that, that that was a pretty astonishing number, and something that, that even though, I don't believe I thought of it regularly, but even though we don't think of it regularly, that asset is entrusted to us five people to some degree, and the fine staff that we have that helps to maintain it. And I think it's, it was an impressive pat on the back for us to some, in some respect, to, to show that our roadways within the City of Santa Maria are what I would just say are above average. Thank you. That's all I have is a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero. Any items pulled for discussion? Okay. If not, let's go to item 3F.
And Mayor, the reason I want to pull this item is I just want our public, our Public Works Department, Mr. Steve Kahn, to explain to the audience so they understand what is going to be happening on the southbound off-ramp at Bitteravia Road, because I get so many calls in regards to this, and I'm sure everybody else does. And so I, instead of just approving it as a blanket, I would like Mr. Kahn to describe what's going on.
Well, I can tell you, the outcome will go to have a lot of happy people.
I know it.
Mr. Kahn, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have put together a project for the Bitteravia Road Interchange to improve the operations of that interchange. We've worked closely with Caltrans in the design approval of the project, and tonight we're bringing before you an award of a project that will add a right-hand turn lane on the southbound off-ramp of the Bitteravia Interchange to prove the operations of that. We'll also be improving the site distance by removing an earthen berm that blocks the distance of the site. The third thing we'll be doing is we'll be improving the northbound on-ramp access by extending the turn lanes on the bridge at the Bitteravia Interchange to the northbound on-ramp. And the fourth and final thing we'll be doing is we'll be improving the turn pocket on the Bradley Road from Bitteravia Road. So those four improvements will greatly improve the operational improvements of the interchange.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the timetable on this, Mr. Kahn?
It's 120 days.
This is the award of the project, so we'll be doing the paperwork with the consultant, excuse me, with the contractor, and we'll probably start the project the first of the year.
So by the middle of the year, it'll all be resolved?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Good, thank you. Okay, so.
With that, Madam Mayor, I would move for the approval of the consent calendar. Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the consent calendar in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Okay. Moving right along here. The next, we have a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive a presentation on the city's bikeway improvement plan.
And the staff report will be made by Public Works Director, Mr. Kahn.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I have been working very hard with my staff on the improving bikeways throughout the City of Santa Maria. I have Roger Oles up with there. He's been instrumental in helping me improve these projects. So what I'd like to do is just give you an overview of the projects we've been working on, and where we're headed with bikeways in the City of Santa Maria. The City of Santa Maria has a bikeway master plan, and we've slowly been implementing projects on the bikeway master plan. The exhibit you have before you shows, first of all, projects and roadways that have already been striped and designed for bikeways, and they're in the dashed lines on this exhibit. The green lines on the drawing exhibit projects that we're going to be doing, we're having designer designing them right now to implement the striping on these particular roadways, and then we'll go out for a project to re-stripe those roadways. The dark red ones are projects that we striped during the chip seal and current overlay projects in order to implement these improvements. And then the yellow ones are development-driven, where developments are occurring near those particular projects, and as those projects are developed, will require bikeways to be improved. So basically, what this is showing you, we're trying to create a grid pattern for the City of Santa Maria to create north-south and east-west bikeways throughout the city that are interconnected to allow people to recreate and travel to work for, with bikeways. The second thing that we're working on is we're working on the active transportation plan, and we've briefed you on this a little bit earlier. We have applied for and got a $300,000 grant through Caltrans to update our bikeway master plan, to provide more details about bikeways that we want to build that will be instrumental in improving our bikeway system. We're also including pedestrian elements in that, ADA accessibility, to be sure that we comply with ADA, and finally, routes to school. We have routes to school plans now, but they really don't detail exact routes that students, students can take to get to school, so we'll be providing more detail on that. Third thing we're doing is we're completing the Civic Center multi-purpose trail. With the exhibit you see on the board, we're going to be doing improvements through Seamus Park, all the way from Miller Road to McClellan to provide access to the city downtown. We already have a multi-purpose trail that goes between College and Miller, behind the Tobes Project and behind the Transit Center. We're also working on a conceptual design to put a bikeway from Bradley Road to College along the old railroad right-of-way, which is on the north side of Hancock College. So that will give us bikeway access all the way from Bradley to McClellan. We've already completed bikeways on that route on Jones Street, from Jones, along Jones from Bradley to Sway Road, so this will give us a good east-west corridor through the center of the city. Next, we've applied for a Blosser Road ATP grant for 1.5 million. This will provide a bikeway between the Levy Bikeway and Bradley Road, excuse me, the bikeway on Levy Trail to Battles Road. We'll be filling in sidewalks, we'll be doing re-striping, and we'll be having bike detection facilities at signals, so you can push button or video that will trigger the signal in order to change it for bicycles. We'll also be producing a multi-purpose trail between Atlantic and Canal Street. So this will provide a north-south route along Blosser Road to further our bikeway. County of Santa Barbara has applied for a Levy Bikeway Trail from Santa Maria to Guadalupe. We support this project. It's also in the bikeway master plan for the City of Santa Maria. This may include paved portions. We have gotten requests to pave the Levy Bikeway to allow the skinny tired bikes to better be able to use that facility. So actually, if it was constructed all the way from Guadalupe to Santa Maria, someone could commute from Guadalupe along the Levy Bike Trail on their bikes for work in Santa Maria, or back and forth, or for pleasure or recreation. With the downtown streetscape plan, we have a bikeway element, and we worked very closely with our consultants to look at what would work for the City of Santa Maria. And what they're proposing is they're actually proposing in the downtown area to put the bikeways on the sidewalks. At first, I was kind of surprised at this, and I looked at it, but I looked around our community, and downtown, a lot of people ride their bikes in downtown on the sidewalks, and so we wanted to continue that concept, to have sidewalks that are big enough to have both pedestrians and bicycles on the same facilities, keep them separated so that there's not a conflict between their interaction. But I actually now think it's a good idea in the downtown area to do that, because our roadways are already filled with cars, and we're looking to narrow the roadways a little bit, so there really won't be facilities on Broadway and Main Street to put bicycles in those areas, so we're looking to put them on the sidewalks. Depot Street Extension. We have planned for a long time to extend Depot Street from Carmen to Bitteravia Road. We are going to start doing the conceptual design and the environmental of that roadway to begin to take a look at building that road. This will provide a path all the way from the Levy to McCoy along Railroad, and then transitioning to Depot Street to provide access to those roads. This would be a good bicycle corridor. Plus also, from a vehicle standpoint, I feel this route would relieve traffic from Blosser and from Broadway along the Bitteravia Corridor by giving the traveling public in a vehicle another route to use. We're also working with the County of Santa Barbara on providing a small paved multi-purpose trail between Haggerman and Wallerman's Park to provide bicycle access between the two parks. We're, we're doing an agreement with the County of Santa Barbara at their request, so we'll be taking that to you, the City Council, and to the board supervisor for approval. It's a pretty small project, but if we need to have an agreement to get it done, then that's what we'll do to get it done. And that's all I have with the report tonight, but I just want to assure you, we're working diligently on providing bikeways for Santa Maria and improving our bikeway system, and Roger and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
Yes. Going back to the bikeway master plan with that map that you just put up there, the first one, how many miles of bikeways do we have in the City of Santa Maria?
I believe it's 65 miles of bikeway, but let me check to make absolutely sure. 67 miles.
67, okay, perfect. And also, I noticed you have new striping for bicycles. In regards to, to the striped line, you now have a picture of a bicycle. How does that work for people who are driving in a car? They're going to be looking for that white line, but all they're going to see are just the pictures of the bicycles. So it's kind of like saying, this is, this could be used as a bicycle lane, but if there are bikes on there, please watch out, but they don't have to be within their stripe line, from the stripe line to the sidewalk.
The, the bike lane is for bicycles. It's, it's not, it's not maybe to be used by, by cars. When you do approach a, a place where there's a right turn lane, the bike line will be dashed.
Yes.
Which does allow for a, a car to merge over and then take that right turn lane in order to use it for, to make the right turn.
Okay, someone had asked me that, and I thought, well, yeah, they must have saw it on Miller, so that's where I've seen the new ones out there. Also, in regards to the bicycles downtown on the sidewalks, is there going to be striping on the sidewalks for bicycles one side, pedestrians the other?
There's actually going to be a change in materials, so you'll actually visually be able to see the difference in between the two. So instead of striping, you'll actually know, oh, this is bikes over here, and this is pedestrians over here.
Okay.
And I think where that question, your question before may have come about, about the signage in the roadway. Along College, where there's a median by the cemetery, we didn't have enough room to put a striped bikeway and a lane, so what we did is we combined the two along that median area, so it goes from a striped bike lane to a share of the road, back to a striped bike lane because of the narrowness of the road in that particular area.
Okay.
Where is this? College.
College, yeah.
It's a college drive between Battles and
It's a college drive between Battles and Enos is where we just recently put that striping. And next year, we'll be doing an overlay project from Enos to Stowe, and we'll stripe the rest of it at that time.
Perfect. Good.
Dr. Moats?
Fascinating, using sidewalks for bicycles. As I've tried to bicycle on both Main Street and Broadway, I found I have to bicycle on the sidewalks to preserve my life. But the sidewalks aren't very wide, and periodically, you have trees that interrupt where I'm trying to cycle. So are those trees going to be going? One thing I noticed, I was in Germany a couple of weeks ago. In particular, I spent about five days in Munich, and in Munich, they bicycle on the sidewalks most of the time. They paint the sidewalk green where the bicycles are going, and so it's very well demarcated, not just by texture, but by color. And when the bicycle paths do go onto the street, they paint bicycle paths green in the street, so it's really easy to see. Are we proposing putting a bicycle lane on the sidewalk, the entire length of both Broadway and Main Street?
Currently, the plan is to put a bicycle on the sidewalk in the downtown specific plan area, downtown streetscape area, which is from Fessler to Cook on Broadway, and from Pine to Miller on Main Street.
What happens when you get out of the downtown specific area? Back in the jungle again?
We would transfer you to another facility, such as Miller Road or other roads that have bicycle facilities on them. And also, as far as your first question about the width of the sidewalk, the plan is ultimately to widen our sidewalks, narrow the travel lanes for vehicles, widen the sidewalk, and have a different material for the bike lanes versus the pedestrian lanes in the downtown core.
Could you make it green?
Actually, what's going to happen is, once we have approval of our traffic study from Caltrans, we'll be going back to the community to talk about exactly what that's going to look like. So we haven't designated a color of choice, but green certainly is popular among this community, and actually, in the United States of America, for bike lanes.
Ms. Waterfield?
One more question. In your grant from the Levy to Battles at 1.5 million, is that something you have applied for, or is that something we have received?
That is something we've applied for, and we'll find out the first of the year whether we've got it or not.
Okay. Perfect.
Sure.
Aren't the farmers uniformly against the bike way to Guadalupe?
With the county applying for that grant, we have heard of farmers' concerns about a bikeway along the Levy, because of the interaction between people and their crops, concerns about animals going out from the Levy with them, and, you know, defecating in the fields and having problems with that. So that interaction would definitely have to be figured out. But yeah, the agricultural community has concerns about a bikeway along the Levy.
Thank you, Mr. Kahn.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, are there any correspondence or any requests to speak?
We have no correspondence or requests to speak.
Okay, I'll bring this back to the council for any discussion or direction. Keep up the good work. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a city-initiated zoning text amendment of Title 12, Chapter 32 of the municipal code regarding residential tandem parking and residential parking in front yards.
Okay. And the staff report is to be made by Community Development Director, Mr. Ing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a presentation on a zoning code amendment for off-street residential parking. This is a technical amendment that would propose to credit parking within the front yard setback and to credit tandem parking. Single-family homes would not be affected by this amendment. What's triggering this is we're receiving some development proposals that warrant greater flexibility in site design. This technical parking amendment will allow for a more efficient use of land and provide more flexibility in the design of residential sites, and reduce development costs, and promote infill housing. I have a couple of graphics that will illustrate what this is about. This is a site design that shows a garage parking with a driveway behind it, and currently, it's prohibited to count the parking on the driveway towards our parking requirements. The amendment would allow the credit of this area towards the parking requirements. Here's another example. To the right and the left, on the left, you have an arrangement where the applicant is trying to meet traditional parking regulations, in which you can't count the parking within the driveways or in the setback, and so you have to create that extra space that's noted in the red highlighted area. With the amendment, you would be able to count the spaces that's in the yellow highlighted area, and that creates more space on the site for either amenities or perhaps another housing unit. This is just a typical elevation of what multifamily could look like. This has garages, and this has driveways, and the tandem arrangement, the amendment to the zoning code would allow for this tandem parking arrangement. So the recommendation is that the City Council accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and introduce an ordinance for the first reading and continue to the next meeting for the second reading, the adoption of the zoning text amendment regarding residential parking in required front yards and residential tandem parking. Welcome, any questions you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Ing? Mr. Boyson?
Mr. Ing, is there a specific project that triggered this?
There are, we've received inquiries over the last couple of years, but yes, there's a specific project that an applicant has in mind, in which this will be really beneficial for them.
And, of course, the downside to this is that now, all of a sudden, we don't have cars behind closed doors, and we're adding to the aesthetic impacts. Have we looked at that?
Well, there's, right now, for multifamily projects, the required parking is one covered space and one uncovered space, and right now, so covered parking is already a requirement. It will still be a requirement. I would think that with a tandem arrangement, that there's always a possibility that, you know, somebody uses the covered parking for storage, and then they park on the driveway, but that's, that can also be mitigated by just carport parking for the covered space, because it's difficult to use carport space for storage, and also still have that driveway space as required parking. The other thought is that we require two parking spaces for all multifamily units. That's a two-bedroom apartment, that's a one-bedroom apartment, that's even a studio apartment. Two spaces are required, and, you know, there are instances in which if somebody, a tenant, may not use both spaces, then that can happen.
So, and I notice that all of your examples up here show 20-foot driveways, but my understanding is that the minimum between the garage, the garage door and the sidewalk is 18 feet. Would we allow tandem parking on 18-foot, or would we require the driveway to be at 20-foot?
The setback for multifamily zones is 20 feet.
Is 20, okay.
So I would expect that that driveway length would be 20 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
And this is mostly for apartments or townhomes, or what?
This is mostly for multifamily buildings.
Which would be what we just, maybe Refugio project that had just been built?
It's actually more beneficial for some of the smaller lots, closer to the core of the city, that's zoned R2 or R3, and given smaller dimensions, it's more difficult to create two spaces per unit, and so the larger sites, usually developers have a way to accommodate and provide all the parking necessary.
Okay. Since we're talking about parking, and garage parking, and tandem parking, and the whole thing, I'm just going to bring this up, and it may be off the subject, but I have received many phone calls across the city with people putting their garbage cans up front where their parking should be, and so they don't park either in their driveway, they're on the streets everywhere, so maybe that's something to look at later on down the road. I know we have an ordinance where garbage cans are not allowed in the front of the houses or on the side of the houses, but I'm just receiving more and more, because we're having families moving in, multifamilies moving into single-family home, so people are getting upset in regards to that as well.
Yeah, I think as we move forward, we can certainly be more considerate, and perhaps work with our utilities department in making sure that, you know, we create the spaces for trash containers for multifamily, single-family, all types of use.
Right, and since we're, you know, basically full with code enforcement just about, maybe that's something that can, they can take a look at as well. Thank you.
Dr. Moats?
Yes, Mr. Ing has been through the Planning Commission and approved by the Planning Commission?
It has, yes.
Were there any credible objections, or any reasons why we shouldn't do this, that were brought up at the Planning Commission?
They had a discussion on queuing, on the backup spacing, and that's, we certainly want to make sure that, you know, whatever we approve, that there's still a functional site design, and we do that as a project moves through the review process. But they voted to approve the amendment.
Any other questions? Mr. Boyson?
And I just want to make sure, this is specifically, single-family residential neighborhoods, this does not affect?
Would not be affected.
This is strictly for R2, R3 type, or would it be R2?
It would, it would impact R2 and R3.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence?
No, we do not.
I'd like to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We have one request to speak.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hassel?
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Joe Hassel with Hassel Builders. We've been asked to look at a number of infill projects lately within the city limits, and as we're doing our initial site designs on them, we're finding that the existing parking code was problematic in getting the number of units, say there's a lot that's 18,000 square feet in an R3 zone. It says, hey, you can build nine units on this project, that's what it's zoned for, and when we try to shuffle the units around and get nine to work on there, we're having real trouble because of the uncovered parking. You know, we're already pouring a driveway, it's already sort of suitable for uncovered parking, and then, like it showed in that exhibit, the big red section in the backyard, we're going to have to pour another parking lot back there, because we can't use the existing driveways. So, one, I, let's see, one, it allows us to, in a timely manner, sort of deliver the units that the lots are zoned for, timely and more affordable, to actually get the number of units on those lots. Secondly, it definitely improves the quality of the development, because we really can, not just, not that it's got, you know, green open space back there, like you can actually have a backyard, but you can also actually provide better privacy on a multifamily development, because very often, they get a little balcony, a tiny little fenced, I mean, a very tiny little fenced-in yard on the bottom floor, and then it's parking. And so, you know, we do want to, we want to develop higher-quality projects, and we just very quickly found that on the infill projects, that this uncovered parking issue is a barrier, just to meet the actual zone, just so that we could actually deliver the units that it's already zoned for. So I do want to commend, I mean, the access to the staff, the responsiveness of the staff, within, I mean, within 10 days of just bringing it up, we had some conceptual exhibits, amendments were drafted, within a couple of weeks after that, I think it had its first Planning Commission hearing, so it's definitely the actions why we love working here. We're going to continually find opportunities to do good projects here for as long as we work on the coast. So from Mr. Ing to Ryan and Frank Albro and the Planning Department, I mean, it was really why we love living and working here, so thank you guys for your consideration.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Moats?
Mr. Hassel, where do the guests park?
Well, let's see. So if you are a guest, you definitely have the opportunity to park on the street. You know, the main residence, we have, we have one in the garage, one in the driveway, and I think the, sort of that parking order was an issue, and they said, well, what are you going to do if someone's in the driveway and somebody else is in the garage? And it's, I mean, I have to do it most mornings. Hey, honey, can I have the keys? I got to move your car, so I can get out. So, I mean, that was a, that was an issue, but on these high-density residential in the R3, on smaller projects, we are not required to take into account guests under, I believe it's 12 units, and I believe that's to encourage the infill sites, to fill those up to their maximum. Larger projects, we do have to provide guest parking spots, but not on the smaller ones, and this is really particularly concerning just the small, high-density infill projects. I mean, this is really all they impact, and there's a lot of them. I mean, there's a lot of this potential here to add scores, I mean, hundreds of units, if you use the infill sites properly, so, but we don't have guest parkings on the street right now.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Cordero.
A comment, yes. I think if you have units that are 12 and under, I don't think you're going to have 12 visitors or 24 visitors showing up at the same time. I'm only guessing, and I have no idea, I have no stats on this, but you might have two or three that take up that street parking, and that is their parking, if they're running around in a car. I mean, any of us can go and park there, so I don't see that as a problem, is all I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hassel. I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this item back to council for discussion or a motion. Mr. Boyson?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, maybe it doesn't necessarily pertain to this. I mean, personally, on projects like this, I would like to see the covered parking be required to be open, covered parking. In other words, a carport or a garage without a door on it, or something like this, because when you put a door on an apartment building, a garage door on an apartment, that's just going to be storage, that is not going to be for parking. And I mean, I think Mike Tobes one time mentioned it in this council chamber, that, you know, he prefers to have open, covered parking, you know, so that it's actually used for parking and not used for storage and that sort of thing. But I also really appreciate staff's flexibility on this. As Mr. Hassel said, that's what makes Santa Maria the great city that it is, and attracts quality developers like himself to Santa Maria, and anything that we can do that will increase the potential number of units without adversely affecting the impact to our neighborhoods, certainly I am all for, so I certainly am supportive of this, and would be happy to make a motion if there's no other comments.
Okay. Have a motion?
With that, Madam Mayor, I would move that we accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission, introduce an ordinance for the first reading, and continue the next meeting for the second reading on the adoption of this zoning text amendment. Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adopt amendments to Chapter 12-32 of the municipal code. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda will be a report by the city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The next meeting of the city council is November 6th, that would be election day, and we have a number of items on the council's agenda. We'll have the second reading of this ordinance amendment. We also have the CDBG 2019-2020 Capital Project Proposal Review. We'll have a request for a reduction of subdivision in Lufi.
We'll have a request for a reduction of subdivision and lieu fees for the Tobes project. And you'll receive the first quarter financial report. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. The next item then is oral reports of council members. Mr. Boyson, would you like to start?
Madam Mayor, no reportable items.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Waterfield.
Yeah, I have received some phone calls in regards to the River Oaks Park neighborhood, particularly the Jim May Park. And I understand we have landscaping tax fees that, you know, go with the parks and stuff. And this neighborhood has been kind of concerned with the park, with the lots of weeds, dying plants, the overgrown bushes and trash and et cetera. And they would be appreciative if we could get that cleaned up over there. They would certainly enjoy that Jim May Park better. And then with that, I will go ahead and give my report from last time. On Wednesday, May 3rd, I did the post-city council meeting with Ben Hayes and then attended the Minerva Club opening day ceremonies on October the 4th. Did not do that one. Friday, October the 5th, I was a keynote speaker at the Santa Maria Valley Republicans. Then later that day, I attended the Central Coast Air Fair Dinner. Monday, the 8th, I attended, which was absolutely wonderful, and everyone's heard about it, was the Laverne Advisory for Allen Hancock College and where we did the congratulatory contract with Laverne University, which is going to bring a whole lot of great things to Allen Hancock. Attended the transportation meeting. We had the railroad as the speaker there, and that railroad is still such a valid asset here in the city of Santa Maria. They are doing quite a bit of business. On Wednesday, the 10th, I attended the city parking lot with the crime issues going over there. And I attended that with several other people in regards to what we were going to do about that. On Thursday, October the 11th, I attended the LAFCO meeting. And this is something that we really have to keep our ears on with annexation. And I will be sending you and our attorney more information in regards to what their ideas are or not in regards to the annexation in the city of Santa Maria. Later that evening, I had participated in the League of Women's Forum, which was a very nice evening. Saturday, I did a Fashion for a Purpose for a nonprofit. And that was, that was very interesting, raised a lot of good money. But what was really the best part of that weekend was I attended the Viejitos Car Show. And that was over at Presker Park. It was also their Christmas drive for the Evans Park kids. And oh my gosh, I've never been around a greater bunch of men, women, and children. And it was just, the cars were wonderful. The cars were great, but the people were just magnificent. I met people from Mexicali, from LA, from all over. What I didn't realize is that this car show, in the short 25 years it's been in existence, is worldwide, not nationwide, but worldwide. And they do a lot of good things for the community. And this was something that they did that was really great for the Evans Park children. So that was a whole lot of fun. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Moats.
Well, on Thursday, October 11th, I also attended the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum, which was interesting. And on the next day, October 12th, I attended a dinner for Operation Surf, which is where disabled veterans learn how to surf at Aval Beach. And on the 13th, I attended a ball, which was in your honor, the Mayor's Ball, which is a fundraiser for United Way. Thank you.
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 4th, I was in attendance telephonically with the United Way Investment Meeting. On the 5th, I was also at the Air Fest Dinner out at the airport, which was a very nice function. And the Kunkles out at the, I think it's called Jet Air or something, had a great deal to do with that. And the whole thing for Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday was an excellent, excellent program. On the 8th, I attended the meeting at Allen Hancock College where some ceremonial signing was done to marry Laverne, the four-year university with Allen Hancock College. And in all the time I've been in the city, that's a really exciting thing to be happening, to see that our community is going to, to be able to have a four-year university. And according to them, their words were that it should be seamless to go from a two-year to a four-year. And I think that'll be a great opportunity for some of the people in our community. And on the 13th, I too was at the Mayor's Ball. You were missed. And they certainly understood the reasoning. But that function, I've been to every one of them, I believe. They started in a tent down at the Marriott in Buellton.
That's right.
And it just keeps getting better and better and better. And it's becoming a function kind of like prison for life, you know? It's kind of taking on a life of its own. So I'm really excited to be a part of that. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. October 3rd, I attended the Minerva Club opening day at the San Maria Radisson. On the, October 6th, I attended the Central Coast Air Fest at the Santa Republic Airport. I think they said there was, what, 15, 20,000 people there? A lot of people. October 8th, I also attended the Laverne Advisory dedication, I guess, to the two bachelor programs they're going to have at Allen Hancock College. And two of the people from Laverne were there. That afternoon, I attended the Chamber Transportation Committee meeting with Speaker Rob Hamoto from the Santa Maria Valley Railroad. On the 9th, I participated in the Western Propane Service Safety Roundtable and attended Rotary. October 10th, I went to Solvang for the North County Subregional Meeting. And then that evening, I attended the Santa Maria Police Council at the Santa Maria Inn. October 11th, I attended the League of Women Voters Election Forum at the Government Center. And October 13th is Fire Prevention Week. I went to the open house and I was a half an hour late. So the bouncy house was all down. And I presented a proclamation at the Filipino-American History Month at the Betts Memorial, which was absolutely packed. There was people from Santa Barbara, all over the central coast, people were in attendance. And on the 14th, I attended the Los Viejitos Car Show out at Presker Park. And they are, Ms. Waterfield and I were approached and they said they wanted to bring the car show from Nopomo back to Santa Maria because that's where they wanted to spend their money. October 15th, I attended the Remembering Our Fallen exhibit at Allen Hancock College. And if you haven't seen that, you really need to go see it, especially all you young people in the back. It's at Allen Hancock and it's building L, and it's open from 9 till 7:30 in the evening. And so go see that because these are young men and women who have fallen, who have given their life for our country. And there's many that are from Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo Counties there. Later that afternoon, I attended Measure RCM at Allen Hancock College. And there was a group of, a panel talking about the different issues with that, deal with what we have to deal with here today. Except they brought out the numbers and it was sort of like a scorecard of what's going on here in Santa Maria. And this morning, I did the Ben Hayes Radio Show and Rotary. And anything else? Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I've spoken with some of the Kunkles and they do plan on having the airshow next year. It's on their radar to do it. So if anyone in here or any of the listening public were unable to make it, it was really a great event and we hope to see it even bigger and better next year. And I don't know who the people are in the back, but I think I speak for all five of us up here. It's great to see young people attending the city council meeting and we appreciate your presence.
Even if you're being forced to be here. Thank you.
And we have three young men also from our fire department. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight.
They're so young.
They are. Anything else from the diocese? If not, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.